And so we're just have a just a momentary delay here. And so you feel just bear with us, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We're waiting for a couple of other commission members. And so we're just have a just a momentary delay here. And so you feel just bear with us, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It will be approximately 15 to 20 more minutes. So if you want to make use of the facilities or if you want to walk rather than sit, you're welcome to.
It will be approximately 15 to 20 more minutes. So if you want to make use of the facilities or if you want to walk rather than sit, you're welcome to.
The time is approximately 5:25 PM. We'll call this meeting in the order of the Planning Commission in Carson City, Nevada at the Community Center, Sierra Room 851 East Williams Street. Ms. Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
Chairperson Wendell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Commissioner Dami.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Commissioner Sadler.
Commissioner Steele.
Here.
O'Quinn is present.
Thank you. Mr. Dami?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The public is invited this time to make to make any comments on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter, and I repeat, any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there anyone that wishes to approach the podium at this time regarding any matter that is not a specifically included on the agenda? That be noted on the record, there is no indication as such. Commissioners, you have two sets of minutes before you. Are you prepared to make a motion regarding the approval of those minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 25, 2014, and July 30, 2014.
We have a motion by Mr. Steele, approve the minutes as prepared. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Dami? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. Modification of agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. And the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Is there any indication as such? There is not. Mr. Blimel?
No, we have no recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any member of the commission that would like to explain any contact with an applicant or a public regarding an item in the agenda or the business of the commission? Ms. Clerk, let be noted on the record, there's no indication of disclosure by any commission members. Public hearing matters. F-1, SUP-14-013, for possible action. To consider a special use permit request from REACH, R-E-M, Nevada, Property Owner Universal Trust, to operate an Adult Day Program for adults with disabilities on property split-zone residential office, General Office, RO/GO, located at 709 East Robinson Street, APN-004-233-01. Ms. Pansky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Susan Dor Pansky, Planning Manager. As you stated in the introduction, this is a request from REACH, R-E-M, to allow an Adult Day Program at 709 East Robinson Street. Just a couple of photos and an aerial of where this is located. The property is located between Walsh and Roop Street on the south side of Robinson Street, as it's shown in the aerial here on the screen. This is a picture of the front of the building looking south. A picture of the rear of the building looking north from Spear Street and the vacant lot that's to the
The time is approximately 5:25 PM. We'll call this meeting in the order of the Planning Commission in Carson City, Nevada at the Community Center, Sierra Room 851 East Williams Street. Ms. Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
Chairperson Wendell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Commissioner Dami.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Commissioner Sadler.
Commissioner Steele.
Here.
O'Quinn is present.
Thank you. Mr. Dami?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The public is invited this time to make to make any comments on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter, and I repeat, any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there anyone that wishes to approach the podium at this time regarding any matter that is not a specifically included on the agenda? That be noted on the record, there is no indication as such. Commissioners, you have two sets of minutes before you. Are you prepared to make a motion regarding the approval of those minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 25, 2014, and July 30, 2014.
We have a motion by Mr. Steele, approve the minutes as prepared. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Dami? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. Modification of agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration. And the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Is there any indication as such? There is not. Mr. Blimel?
No, we have no recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any member of the commission that would like to explain any contact with an applicant or a public regarding an item in the agenda or the business of the commission? Ms. Clerk, let be noted on the record, there's no indication of disclosure by any commission members. Public hearing matters. F-1, SUP-14-013, for possible action. To consider a special use permit request from REACH, R-E-M, Nevada, Property Owner Universal Trust, to operate an Adult Day Program for adults with disabilities on property split-zone residential office, General Office, RO/GO, located at 709 East Robinson Street, APN-004-233-01. Ms. Pansky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Susan Dor Pansky, Planning Manager. As you stated in the introduction, this is a request from REACH, R-E-M, to allow an Adult Day Program at 709 East Robinson Street. Just a couple of photos and an aerial of where this is located. The property is located between Walsh and Roop Street on the south side of Robinson Street, as it's shown in the aerial here on the screen. This is a picture of the front of the building looking south. A picture of the rear of the building looking north from Spear Street and the vacant lot that's to the
The time is approximately 5:25 PM. We'll call this meeting in the order of the Planning Commission in Carson City in Nevada, at the Community Center, Sierra Room 851 East Williams Street. Ms. Clerk, would you take the roll call, please?
Chairperson Wendell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Castro. Commissioner Dami.
Here.
Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Sadler. Commissioner Steele.
Here.
O'Quon is present.
Thank you. Mr. Dami?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The public is invited this time to make any comments on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter, and I repeat, any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Is there anyone that wishes to approach the podium at this time regarding any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda? That be noted on the record, there is no indication as such. Commissioners, you have two sets of minutes before you. Are you prepared to make a motion regarding the approval of those minutes?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 25, 2014, and July 30, 2014.
We have a motion by Mr. Steele, approve the minutes as prepared. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Dami? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. Modification of agenda. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Is there any indication as such? There is not. Mr. Blimmel?
No, we have no recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any member of the Commission that would like to explain any contact with an applicant or public regarding an item in the agenda or the business of the Commission? Ms. Clerk, let be noted on the record, there is no indication of disclosure by any Commission members. Public hearing matters. F-1, SUP-14-013, for possible action, to consider a special use permit request from REACH, R-E-M-Nevada, Property Owner Universal Trust, to operate an adult day program for adults with disabilities on property split zone residential office, general office, RO/GO, located at 709 East Robinson Street, APN 004-233-01. Ms. Pansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Susan Dor Pansky, Planning Manager. As you stated in the introduction, this is a request from REACH, R-E-M, to allow an adult day program at 709 East Robinson Street. Just a couple of photos and an aerial of where this is located. The property is located between Walsh and Roop Street on the south side of Robinson Street, as it's shown in the aerial here on the screen. This is a picture of the front of the building looking south, a picture of the rear of the building looking north from Spear Street and the vacant lot that's to the south of the property. And this is a picture of the side of the building, from the Wall Street side, where the parking lot exists. So, REACH right now is located on the north end of town off North Gate Lane, so this is actually not a new business to Carson City. It is just a move of an existing business. They desire to expand their business to a larger building and have selected this building to do so. They provide an adult day program for adults with disabilities and handicaps that are not able to care for themselves on a daily basis. However, I'd like to note that while we're considering this through zoning similar to an adult daycare, the program that they provide is not classified as adult daycare through the state, meaning that they are not licensed as an adult daycare facility. It's more of an educational program and a facility where these adults with disabilities can go during the day to learn vocational skills and various home skills that are able to help them to insert into the community. I've got a couple of slides that show the floor plan and the site plan, but generally it's not really changing from what is in the building now. This is what's up on the screen right now, is essentially the building as it's configured with some minor changes proposed by the applicant on the interior. That would be subject to tenant improvement, building permit requirements. And then the exterior of the building that shows essentially what the building looks like today with the existing landscaping and the existing parking. So, while staff has a definition for adult daycare, which we're considering this to be similar as in the code, we do not have it listed specifically under any specific zoning districts. However, we feel that an adult daycare situation and a childcare situation in its impact on the surrounding community is relatively similar. So, in areas where a special use permit is required for a daycare facility, we felt as staff that it would be appropriate also to provide or require a special use permit for an adult daycare facility as well. It could potentially, because of the educational element, it could fall also under the definition of a vocational school. However, we don't feel that this facility or the program that's being provided really has the same impact as a typical vocational school would have. Therefore, it makes it more appropriate in locations like the general office zoning Staff is recommending approval. We have not received any comments for or against this proposed project. We did have a call today from an adjacent property owner asking some questions about what was being proposed and also initially expressing some concerns about potential traffic increases, but upon speaking with Kathy Green, who wrote the staff report, she was satisfied that the traffic would not be significantly increased with what's being proposed. Generally, the clients of this facility will access it by being dropped off in the morning, either through Jack Assist, which is the city bus program for people with disabilities, or through private party cars. The parking really is intended to be more for the staff than for the clients of the facility. We've recommended several conditions of approval, and the applicant has actually worked with staff in various departments for many months now. The permit had come into us earlier in the year, and then they had put it on hold and had been working through some issues with various members of the other departments to make sure that they had all their bases covered before they came back in. So, again, we're recommending approval, and I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Pansky. For the record, do you want to address special conditions or the conditions of approval 14 and 16?
Thank you for reminding me. So, because this had come in initially, earlier in the year, the most of the departments had provided comments early on, and through some discovery with the applicant, it was determined that the initial comments provided by some of the departments were not appropriate for the actual use. So, in writing the staff report initially, Kathy had indicated through conditions 14 and 16, which were specifically from the fire department, that those, a change of occupancy was going to be required, and there were going to be some issues that they needed to address. However, she issued a late information memo, which the Commission should have in front of them rescinding conditions 12 and 14. So, if you could, assuming...
14 through 16.
14 through 16, thank you. 14 through 16. So, if through your approval of this project, if you could modify your motion to remove those, that's what staff's current recommendation is.
Thank you, Ms. Pansky. Any Commission members have any questions at all of Ms. Pansky at this time?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If this were to be considered as an educational facility, would that also require a special use permit in this district?
A school? I don't believe a school is allowed in this district. General office? A vocational school is not, which is what the closest thing would be. So, the answer to a vocational school is no.
Okay.
A regular school, K through 12, I'm uncertain.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Dami, you have a question?
Since they are moving from North Gate to here, how many employees are at present working there on North Gate?
I'm going to leave that answer to the applicant. I don't know what their current employees does.
Okay, then I will ask them.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Pansky? There being no indication as such, we'd like to have the applicant come forward, please. And if you would please, if there are two of you, if you would identify yourself with the record, please.
My name is Adina Marie Lindblum.
My name is Darrell Wright, and I'm the Executive Director for REM Nevada.
That's Mr. Wright. And your last name, ma'am?
Lindblum.
Okay. Thank you. Did both of you hear the testimony or statements provided by Ms. Pansky regarding this particular application?
Yes.
All right. You also heard the comments that she made regarding special condition 14 and 16?
Correct.
Is that correct? Are you familiar with all the other special conditions of approval?
Yes.
Do you agree with them?
Yes.
All right. Would you wish to make any other statement at this time, in addition to what Ms. Pansky has already addressed?
I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Pansky. She kind of identified our book of business and what we do eloquently and correctly. We serve the members of the community. Here, we have been devoted to doing that for quite some time and continue to be devoted to serve the individuals of this city that are in need.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ma'am, do you wish to say anything?
Nothing to add.
All right. Any Commission members have any questions of Mr. Wright? Or...
Yes, Mr. Wright. How many employees are working at present?
Currently, we have eight. There are five full-time employees and three on call. With myself, administrator, there is nine.
Okay. And how many kids are there at present?
Right now, for adults, there are currently 16, 17 enrolled, and we have a daily attendance of about 12. So, at any given time, there's about 12 that are coming ongoing, but there are 17 enrolled.
So, this place is sufficient for you?
Absolutely.
So, that was my question, actually.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Mr. Steele?
To either one of you, Mr. Wright or Ms. Lindblum. The volume of traffic coming from both directions, do you guys feel comfortable with the participants?
Yeah, one of the things that we do in all of our facilities is ensure the safety of the individuals. The interior doors would be chimed. The way the setup of the building is, it keeps the exterior doors far enough away from the full activity that we feel that it's suitable. Also, there's a substantial parking lot that gives us a buffer as it relates to drop off and pickup.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindblum?
Thank you.
Would any member of the public have a desire to come forward and make any comments regarding this application? Let be noted on the record, there's no indication from the public indicating they'd like to provide any comments. We'll bring it back to the Commission for comments, discussion. Mr. Dami?
No discussion. I can move...
You have a motion?
Yes.
Please go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. I move to approve SUP-14-013, a special use permit to allow the operation of an adult day program for adults with disabilities on a split zone property in the residential office and general office zoning districts located at 709 East Robinson Street, APN 004-233-01, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
14 and 16.
And also modify the condition number 14 to 16, which is deleted by the...
Which is deleted. Thank you, Mr. Dami. We have a motion. Mr. Dami, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright, Mr. Lindblum. Well, you know one thing, you're very patient. Thank you for waiting.
And I apologize for keeping you waiting.
Next item on the agenda, F-2, SUP-14-136, for possible action, to consider requests from Custom Sign &amp; Crane, property owner Adams Carson LLC, to modify a previously approved special use permit, U-82-25, to allow additional and modified signage at the Carson City Nugget on property zone downtown mixed use DT/MU located at 507 North Carson Street, APN 004-211-11. Ms. Pansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an application from the Carson Nugget. They wish to modify the signage on their property to not only update it, but also to add some additional signage in preparation for some new venues that they will be providing within the casino, which include a concert venue and a wine bar/cafe. In addition to those new venues, they feel that the current signage is not adequate for what is going on within the casino, and it's also quite dated, as I'm sure the Commission has noticed, those signs have been up for many, many years. The property has been in existence under its current building configuration for almost 40 years now, with some modifications to the signage over the years, but not a significant amount. So, I recognize that the application and the staff report is probably a little bit hard to follow as far as what signs are being removed, what signs are being added, some are being replaced. So, I'm going to try to navigate through that as best I can and make it as simple as possible. We're going to just start with what's on this property currently. So, this is the subject parcel, the Carson Nugget, located on Carson Street and Robinson, I believe it is, just the aerial of the property. And I'll note that all of the parcels around the Nugget, including this parking lot, this parking lot, all of these parking lots are all part of the property. They're all just separate parcels as well, but they are not subject to this special use permit. The signage is strictly on the building for this modification. So, this is, we're just going to take a walk around the Nugget to show what's there now, the main Nugget Casino sign, and then move into the east on Robinson, some of the signage that's there today. All of the reader boards have to be hand-placed when they make changes to them. This is going back towards the south on Carson Street, and you'll notice that there's quite a large empty expand that is between the sign here and where the next Nugget sign is on the next one. So, quite a large empty void on the building currently. And then the southeast corner of the building, and this is the rear of the building facing back towards Plaza Street, and then another shot of the rear of the building. So, that's what's existing on the property today. And this site plan shows essentially what's existing on the property right now, kind of where those are located. So, from here, I'm going to go to a similar site plan that kind of shows where the new signs are going to be. In most cases, in similar locations, however, the signage is going to be a little bit different. So, we'll kind of go through what the new signage is going to look like. First, along the, along the front and right at the corner on the Nugget Casino, you'll note that they're proposing a new LED sign underneath the casino lettering on the main Nugget sign. That's the first one. And then on either side, both to the left and the right on this slide, you'll see that they're proposing some new signage, which consists of flexible-faced, externally illuminated signage with, it's hard to see in this picture, but I'll try and point them out. You may not be able to see them at all. There are some what are called external gooseneck lights, which are basically external lighting that curves down and shines onto the signage. They're not backlit lights. They're actually lit from the lights above them. On the west side of the building, again, you see the flexible face signs. On the left of this picture, the Nugget Casino sign will stay the same. And then to accommodate what's proposed to be the new coffee and wine facility, there are a couple of new signs, also with the flexible face, but with various other configurations. And these are all stationary signs. None of them have any movement, but the flexible faces have the ability to change out relatively easily when they have new talent coming into the facility or, you know, any changes on specials that they want to address. Just another shot of the new sign at the corner, the coffee, wine, and espresso sign, and then over to the left of it, this cafe sign, and then there's another small one right down here as well. And then, I didn't note before, but there are a few signs below on the street level. I'll go back to that other one. On either side of the main entrance from the Carson Street side, there are some smaller flex face signs as well. And then on the rear of the property, they're proposing a new flex face sign on the southeast corner. And then also, they're taking the two existing cabinets that are on the property now, and one of them is on the rear of the property, and it will just be changed out, so the flexible face will be there. And then the other one is being moved from another location on the property to the rear, so they can utilize those cabinets. In these cases, these two will actually be lit from the back, because that's the configuration of the cabinets now. So, those will be backlit, but the other ones will still be lit from the gooseneck signage or the gooseneck lighting. And that concludes what the applicant is proposing. All in all, it's about, I know that the initial agenda said about 1,000 square feet of additional signage. It's actually about 1,200 square feet. It's, as I've noted in the staff report, significantly higher than what would typically be allowed in the, what we call other commercial uses under our sign code. However, other commercial uses does not specifically take casinos into consideration. It's a very broad category. So, it is appropriate, in the case of this large casino, to consider additional signage to accommodate all of the various entertainment and restaurant and gaming venues that are within the building. Staff is recommending approval. We have not received any comments for or against this project, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pansky. Any Commission member have any questions? Ms. Pansky? Mr. Steele?
Yes. Ms. Pansky, I...
Yes, Ms. Pansky, I do see that you have the external signs in the parking lot, are those also included in that package?
They're included to calculate existing signage and to memorialize it because applications for special use permit modifications of the signage on this property have not been clear up to this point, so we wanted to be able to have something that showed us exactly what was on the site. So it's included as existing, but they're not proposing changes to any of the freestanding signs.
So in the future, though, if that's included in the calc's, there is the potential that that could be added, because it is based on the calculation, that could be added in the future?
It's technically, they're technically part of it now.
Correct.
They're just not part of the new signage.
Not part of the new signage, but it could be added, okay.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Pansky? There being no indication as such, we'll invite the applicant to come forward, please. Identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, I'm Mark Lipkowitz, I'm the owner of Custom Sign and Crane.
Good evening, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
Great job, what a complicated project.
Did you fully hear the testimony provided by Ms. Pansky?
I did.
And have you had the opportunity to read the conditions for approval?
I have.
And do you agree with them, sir?
I do.
All right, thank you. We're welcome to receive any testimony, any further testimony from you.
Well, Ms. Pansky did a great job, because it is complicated, but there are new owners, and when you have new owners, they want to make the outside of their building look a little newer. This one hasn't been, there's not been a lot done to it in about forty years. The signage, the majority of the signage is not going to be backlit, it'll be lit from the top, and so that will add, there will be a, it'll be kind of an ambiance like the signs were painted on in the past, or what those flex face signs are trying to look like. And the signs along the sidewalk, the owner, as we walked the property, had two comments for me. One is that it looks a little like a prison, so he'd like it not to look that way. And the other one is, on Carson Street, they feel that they look closed because of the tinted windows and the gold and the immense amount of brickwork that's on the street there. So they're trying to get a little bit of light and a little bit of excitement on the sidewalk there with some point-of-purchase signs, and this corner that you see under the coffee, wine, espresso, that's not the exact face that'll go on that sign, but they didn't have the artwork done yet, but they're going to have an entrance right there, and the coffee shop is going to be open so you can walk from the courtyard into there. So they're trying to get people to walk down the street and see that they're open and get some foot traffic moving around in that area, so. And in my opinion, I think it's well-needed in that area.
Thank you, sir. Any commission member have any questions at all, or Mr. Lipkowitz?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dammy?
First of all, I like you are changing the signs, that is a good thing, because it will make the property nice, and it will be good for the city too. But you are putting much more than the limit, the court says.
Yes.
So that is a little bit concerned, there is a lot of signs everywhere.
Well, let me comment to that. If you had a single-use property, like a restaurant, or a hotel, or a bar, or a concert venue, you would be allowed six hundred square feet of signage. The Nugget has three restaurants, two bars, convention center, a casino, and a concert venue. They have seven different things going on inside there, and if you allowed them each six hundred square feet of signage, they would be allowed forty-two hundred total square feet of signage. So if you had these properties separate around town, you would have forty-two hundred square feet of signage. Cumulatively, the new signage and the existing signage spread out on all those parcels, I believe only adds up to thirty-five hundred square feet. So if you had those venues around town, you would have about six hundred, seven hundred square feet more signage than what we're asking for here. And as the casinos in town go, we have a current special use permit at the Fandango, and they have much more signage than the Carson Nugget does. And I don't believe that it's overbearing for the property. This property is big, it's a big property.
Are there any other questions for, that you may have of Mr. Lipkowitz? Mr. Steele?
Yes, Mr. Lipkowitz, the next question I have was, we're talking about the neon lights, and even though we were doing the backlighting on that, the neon lights, we're still going to fall under, and Susan, this may apply to you too, with all the neon signs that we've been talking about and all the ratings we've had with all the other neon signs that we have in Carson and we've been looking at, we're still going to fall under the ratings, the, all of the lighting with the immense amount of signing that we're having, we're still going to be under the ratings for the luminance of the signs? Is that still going to apply for these particular signs?
Yes, it will, and we will look at that specifically during the building permit process to ensure that they meet those requirements. However, I expect that because all of these signs, for the most part, are already lit in some way or another, the addition of a few more signs in the modification is not going to have a significant impact.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to comment on that. I know that there's a lot of people that feel that having control of light and the emission of light in downtown areas is something important, and it is important, especially when it comes to the message centers and things that glare, but don't limit the downtown area from being well-lit and festive and vibrant, because when you do that, people don't go there anymore.
And I do agree with you a hundred percent there, Mark, because I think it's very important to be well-lit.
Yes.
And I don't think it should totally fall under that total, the luminance criteria that a lot of the other neon signs go at the same time, and I think it should be attractive. And I think it should be well-lit for pedestrians and the surrounding area, especially in the parking areas. So that was kind of where my direction was going, was to make sure that it is well-lit and we are attracting pedestrians and foot traffic in there. That was where I was.
Yeah, with the concert venue and that amount of people that they're going to try, you know, they've started it, and they're going to try to continue that, you know, they're trying to bring quite a bit of people to downtown so that when the concert's over, the people stay downtown and they utilize the services instead of just immediately getting in their cars and going, so.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Lipkowitz? All right, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to, actually, we'll invite the public to come forward at this time and offer any comments regarding this application. Is there any in the public at all that would like to address it? And let it be noted on the record, there's no indication that anyone from the public wants to provide any testimony regarding this application. Therefore, we'll bring it back to the commission for any other questions you may have of the finding department or discussion? Motion? All right.
Yes, sir. I move to approve S U P dash one four dash one three six, a request from Custom Sign and Crane, property owner Adams Carson LLC, to modify a previously approved special use permit, U dash eight two dash two five, to allow additional and modified signage at the Carson Nugget on property zone downtown mixed use, located at five zero seven N Carson Street, A P N zero zero four dash two two one dash one one, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report.
We have a motion for approval by Mr. Dammy, do we have a second?
Seconded that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Steele. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your input. Next item on the agenda, F dash three A, M P A dash one four dash one four zero. For possible action, to adopt a resolution recommending to the board of supervisors, approval of master plan amendment to change the land use designation of a total of approximately sixty-six acres of property located south of Highway fifty west at Lake Tahoe Golf Course Drive, A P Ns zero zero seven dash zero three one dash three four and dash three five, and zero zero seven dash zero five one dash eight five and dash eight six, from public, quasi-public, to rural residential. Ms. Pansky.
If we could, Mr. Chair, we'd like to open the item, the next item, along with this so you can hear them together, F three A and B.
All right.
They're both related to the same property.
Okay. Per the request, we'll also be addressing F dash three B, Z M A dash one four dash one four one, for possible action, to recommend to the board of supervisors, approval of a zoning map amendment to change the zoning of a total of approximately sixty-six acres of property located south of Highway fifty west at Lake Tahoe Golf Course Drive, A P Ns zero zero seven dash zero three one dash three four and dash three five, and zero zero seven dash zero five one dash eight five and dash eight six, from conservation reserve to single-family five acre. Ms. Pansky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you stated in your opening, this is a request from the state of Nevada, and Carson City is actually bringing these applications forward for a master plan amendment and a zoning map amendment on parcels that they own along Clear Creek Road south of Highway fifty. And this aerial demonstrates where those parcels are located. This is, the roadway that you see going through this part, these parcels is Lake Tahoe Golf Course Drive, which ultimately goes down to the Tahoe Golf Club, which is the residential golf course community located in Douglas County. As mentioned in the staff report, the current master plan is public, quasi-public, the current zoning is conservation reserve. We are proposing that the master plan change to rural residential and the zoning change to single-family five acre. The current master plan is shown on the slide here on the screen now, you can see the various colors that are indicated on the screen. Light green is public, quasi-public. The darker green is rural residential, and just to clarify, while this, it does look light green on the screen, it's intended to be mint green, we probably should have made those a little bit, oops, different. But the light green is here, public, quasi-public, rural residential here to the east, to the west is conservation reserve, and also in various places to the northwest. The pink is open space, and the orange is conservation reserve, and the purple is public conservation. I said that already. So staff is recommending that this master plan change from the public, quasi-public to rural residential to be consistent with the rural residential properties that are located to the east. And I'd like to point out, there is an error in the staff report, and unfortunately, I don't remember exactly where it is, but there is an indication that the parcels to the east, I think it's related to the zoning, that the parcels to the west are also zoned single-family five acre. I can't find exactly where that is right now, but just follow along with me instead. On the zoning, what we're proposing is conservation reserve is what exists to the west now, to the east is single-family five acre, what is currently in the middle is also conservation reserve. Staff is proposing that it be converted to a single-family five acre to be consistent with the properties on the east. Staff feels that this is an appropriate request for this area, given that Tahoe Golf Course Drive is now going through there, the properties are more easily accessible by the public, there are public facilities in the area that can service these properties, and we feel it is appropriate to make these changes to accommodate what the state would ultimately like to do, which is to dispose of these parcels through their state sale process. I'd like to note also that there is a proposal in our unified pathways master plan for a trail and a trailhead that would ultimately be located in this area, and what I'm showing on the screen here, the purple is right at Highway fifty and Clear Creek, not Clear Creek Road, and Tahoe Golf Course Drive would be the approximate location of a proposed trailhead per our master plan, and then the red areas indicate where, you know, approximate locations of the trail ultimately would be located. And the reason why this is important is because there is a push, and Carson City is involved in this as well, as a partner with Douglas County and various other stakeholders, to complete a trail that has already started that, you know, generally follows the red line that you see here, and it starts at the Tahoe Golf Club Drive and ends just to the west right now of the current state property. So in an effort to help the state with their process in disposing of this land, in the hopes that in the future development processes of this land, we will gain the trailhead and the trail that we need, staff feels it's appropriate to recommend approval of both the master plan amendment and the zone change. We have included some comments that were provided by some of the stakeholders for this process, including Douglas County, and I believe Carson City Parks and Recreation Department, as well as Mr. Jeremy Balkan, and I'm sorry if I haven't pronounced that name correctly. There are various members of the public in the audience tonight, I believe, that would like to speak on this, the topic of the trailhead as it relates to these processes, but again, we're recommending approval. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. One thing I would like to note, the master plan amendment does require a supermajority vote, which is at least five members of the seven-member board, because we have four members here today, whatever way you vote will not be a recommendation of approval, but we will bring it forward to the plan, to the board in whatever form that takes, assuming that the entire board votes for it. It would be a four-oh in favor, however, we're not able to officially recommend the approval because we lack the number of members to do so tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Pansky. Mr. Eswin?
Could you, could you point out the four separate parcels that are involved in this?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So we've got two parcels to the south of the road, and then these two small parcels to the north, and this oh oh seven oh five one eight six actually extends all the way over to the east and down. It's kind of a really funky-shaped parcel.
Are either of those buildable lots? Are either of them five acres?
They're, they're not five acres on each of these sides here, but we anticipate that there, well, we would allow a cluster type of situation for these parcels when they come forth to be developed, so.
But they would be non-conforming lots? Is that a good idea to be creating non-conforming lots?
The non-conform, Lee Plumwell Community Development Director, so I did a little research and working with them on this, so that, for example, this property, this piece right here is a little bit over, is a little bit over an acre, just to give you a kind of an idea of size there. They're buildable now, we don't have, you don't have to have the five acres in a zoning, in any particular zoning district to be buildable, you don't have to meet it, it's, the purpose of the zoning designation is for the creation of new lots, so as long as they could meet the setbacks of, if it's changed to five-acre zoning, they can meet the setbacks on that property, which they probably could if they have an acre, they could be buildable. It would likely not, a house would likely not get built there by a developer, it would likely be transferred through some planned unit development, cluster-type development to the other side of the property. Just by look, by looking at what's there, it's likely it would be transferred, but it is a buildable lot.
Are there any other questions of staff? Mr. Steele.
My question is in regards to water. Talking about five-acre parcels, sixty-six, five-acre parcels, that's eleven potential wells. If you only have single-family homes on those eleven parcels, that's eleven wells if it doesn't go multi. How does that affect the water for the Clear Creek? The users within that community? The users downstream that currently live in the Clear Creek community that are using that source? As well as the Stewart Indian community that uses the well for them? The Clear Creek has their main source? How is that going to affect that? The water source for that?
So, any, Danny Roder, Public Works Engineering Manager, for the record, any lots in this area, because they're so far away from public water system, would be individual wells. As far as I know, there has been no studies on an aquifer at any level three, four hundred feet in this area. Any sort of community water system where they drilled two wells to serve eleven homes would be permitted through the state requiring water rights and a full community public water system, which would require public outreach, public hearings, comment, all those sorts of things. If they were individual wells, they wouldn't be regulated by the state, but they would be allowed based on the size of the lots and distance from any septic. But one of the requirements we have here is that since this whole facility used to be on city sewer, it would all be city sewer down the road. So, there would be no septic to sewer, septic to well separation. They would just be individual home wells. And that was, that would be the only way to, to provide the water there. Those, those would be the two options. A community water system with water rights that they would have to buy from somebody to put in wells there because they couldn't apply for them, I don't think. Or individual wells for the homes. Does that answer your question? What you're getting at?
That, that kind of answered my question, yes. And then? I have one more question, continuing on from there. That, the road, the interchange for the, the Golf Drive, is that, that's their main access. So, we, we do have ingress and egress coming out of there. Obviously, that's an emergency egress as well. And that is all of the access that they need to get in there because we had the same discussion with all of the other five-acre lots further downstream on Clear Creek Road because we had issues with the, the tribe and the different owners and, you know, the issues with the, using the road. Do we have any of those issues coming up the road with this section of the road? Or do we have all of the ingress, egress that we need at, at this particular interchange going in and out of this facility?
So, the parcels can definitely access Highway 50 from Tahoe Golf Course Drive, and that is adequate to get out to Highway 50. However, the fire department has noted in their comments that when development comes forward on these parcels, that they will require a second access from the parcels out to Tahoe Golf Course Drive. We are not able to condition a master plan amendment or zone change to put that in place, but we felt it was important to note that just for the record in these comments, that depending on the configuration of the lots and how they're ultimately laid out, there will need to be another access onto Tahoe Golf Course Drive. But there is not a requirement, nor is it necessary for an additional access out to Highway 50 from Tahoe Golf Course Drive to accommodate them.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
And to just tie onto that real quickly, I think what you were getting at is from Tahoe Golf Club Drive at the intersection of Old Clear Creek Road, they're down, they don't have to touch because we're saying they can have two access points on Tahoe Golf Club Drive and meet the ingress and egress legally. Public utility right-of-way. None of the, all of the, the Old Clear Creek Road mumbo jumbo with all the others.
Applies it all. Okay, perfect. That's what, that would, that answered my question. Thank you, Danny.
Are there any other questions of staff by the commission? We will open this up to the public and for any comment regarding this application. Is there anyone having a desire to come forward? Please identify yourself for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Juan Guzman. I am a member of the Carson Valley Trails Association. I am the former open space manager for Carson City. I also served for a few years under Mr. Plemlow, or actually with Mr. Plemlow, under Walter Sullivan as senior planner for Carson City. Since that time, I've been involved in matters that relate to Clear Creek. As a matter of fact, I wrote the staff report that originally resowned the, the five acres and the master plan amendment for the five acres many years ago. That aside, I am in favor. I would like to express my support for this nomination. And there's something difficult in here to understand. And, and I'm going to try to do my best to, to explain to you. And that is that, as a member of the conservation community, as a person who desired this land to be open space eventually, this change of land use, increasing the zoning and increasing the master plan, potential designation, will help that, will facilitate that, as opposed to be contrary to that. It is possible that the value, in fact, may be higher. And that is okay. If, if the value is whatever will be determined by one or more appraisers and the community, the open space community should be able to, to be able to afford more value if, in fact, there is more value because in the end, will result in the public, in the public good. When these lands go for sale, we anticipate forming a coalition of, of people that can bid, follow the, the legal process designated by law, and eventually be able to, to preserve the land. If that is not the case, your staff have informed you that under their eyes, under, under their thinking and under the present regulations that, of the commission, the best future use of the property will be some kind of cluster development, some kind of where the densities are moved around and where the, the impact of, of the development is minimized and, and the open space opportunities are maximized. And we have been very successful in working with developers throughout the community in creating that kind of product. So, I believe that the future is bright. And this is one more step in the, in the, towards the eventual conservation of most of the land or all of the land if, under a very good forecast. I also wanted to, to inform the commission that the result of the smaller parcels is just, it was the dedication of the road. With the dedication of the road resulted in those remnant pieces of land that do not meet the five-acre zoning criteria. But again, eventually, the idea is to cluster, not to individual those, to have those separate. Something that is probably, I would like to highlight is that to the north, across the highway, and that is the only way to cross the highway. Even when it's very narrow and pedestrian-wise, you know, may or may not work, it is the only current way of going under it. To the north, it is anticipated that there will be a trail extension extending to Kings Canyon area and from the Kings Canyon area to the Ash Canyon through the present-built trail. So, it is very important strategically that this trailhead be provided somewhere in this vicinity because it's the only place that will facilitate relatively easier way of crossing the highway to the other side. Are there any questions, any comments?
Any questions by the commission? Mr. Steele.
Yeah, Juan, you're talking about the, the trailhead coming off, it looks like the trail coming off of the side of the hill right there. You're talking about a trail coming out of Kings Canyon, coming down, and you're saying that that's going to cross over into this open spaceland. And this is going to be basically a trailhead that's going to continue down through the Golf Course in, towards Douglas County? That's, is that the way, that's the way I'm hearing what you're saying?
That is what, what we anticipate. Of course, all of that will require quite a lot of negotiation.
Oh, sure.
All the partners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Any other questions? Mr. Guzman. Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Appreciate your input, sir. Is there any other member of the public? Yes. Please identify yourself for the record, ma'am.
For the record, Anne Bolinger, the fairly new open space administrator. So, I feel it's appropriate to follow, Mr. Guzman. I am here to present our department's comments on this proposal. As staff identified, in this vicinity, the Unified Pathways Master Plan does identify a trail and trailhead. In these properties, there's a lot of history, and several people in the room can provide the history to you of, of why this is so important and why this is coming forward for your review and approval. Given that we support the trail and trailhead, we support the, the staff recommendation for the zoning map amendment and the master plan amendment. Also, as Mr. Guzman informed you, these areas have, were identified in the open space master plan as well as undeveloped land with desirable open space attributes and within the hillside, open space priority areas. And moving forward, our department would like to commit our further involvement with state lands and the community on these parcels to work together for a solution and, and also for future maintenance as well. Thank you.
Excuse me, just a minute. Are there any questions by the commission or Ms. Bolinger? Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate your input. Is there anyone else from the public or an interested party that would like to provide any testimony? Again, please identify yourself for the record and any organization you represent.
Okay, hi, my name is Brenda Hunt. And although I am a board member for the Carson Valley Trails Association, today I'm here in the capacity as a Carson, Carson River Coalition Coordinator, which is facilitated through the Carson Water Subconservancy District. The Carson River Coalition is a large watershed stakeholder group that has eleven guiding principles. And principle ten supports the recreational access within the watershed. We don't really have an opinion on the actual master plan and zoning amendments, but we do have, we are in support of the ultimate outcome being the trailhead proposed that, that may be facilitated through this action. And we're hoping that that, it is a fairly critical trailhead as others have suggested. And we are hoping that, that not only will this happen, the amendment will facilitate it, but that it will, that the trailhead will actually occur sooner than the proposed development that would, that would happen after the amendment occurred. Because that might not happen for years down the road. And so, we're really hoping that the, the trailhead will happen prior to any development on this parcel.
Are there any questions, Ms. Hunt, by the commission? Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Are there any other individuals within the public? Yes, sir. Again, please identify yourself for the record, any organization or that you represent.
Good evening. My name is Carlo Lurie, and I am also a board member of the Carson Valley Trails Association.
And your last name again, sir?
Lurie, L-U-R-I.
Thank you.
So, I am also a board member of the Carson Valley Trails Association. You can tell we're pretty passionate about the subject. And, and also, I represent Douglas County's Economic Vitality Program. I think you'll see a letter in there from our Economic Vitality Manager. So, I'll, I'll start by saying that we don't have any objection to state lands maximizing the value of their parcel if they feel that a zoning change is appropriate for the public good. And I, I'll say, as an economic vitality champion for Douglas County, our county is recognized, as I'm sure Carson City does as well, a very important economic component of developing public trails. Both for the, it's something for the public good and allows people access. There's a long, long history, as you'll see in your packets, on this trail as far back as 2008. Carson Valley Trails Association, along with other partners, had verbal commitments from state lands to develop the trailhead there. And, and at this point, they, they feel that the zoning change is necessary to allow that trailhead to move forward. And so, we're hoping to move forward with those negotiations after the zoning change takes place. But again, we know the rules that the trailhead can't be conditioned on any zoning change, but we just feel it's important to get it in the public record that this trailhead is really important, not just for Carson City, but also for Douglas County.
Are there any questions? Mr. Norrie. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your input. Again, would you notify, identify yourself for the record, sir, and who you represent?
Yeah, I'm Steve Hale. I'm a board member for the Carson Valley Trails Association as well. And some of the points that Mr. Guzman and Mr. Lurie just mentioned, I'll not repeat. But I wanted to add two things, in that I understand that there's no conditioning for these types of changes at this point. But in addition to a trailhead, this property adjustment allows for the potential for a multiple-use public park, not just a trailhead. So, I wanted to state that maybe that was something that could be considered in the future, not just a trailhead, but the opportunity to have multiple uses at the same location. And the second thing is that often, public accesses like these to public land and trails enhances adjacent property values as opposed to detracts from them. And we, as the Carson Valley Trails Association, recognize that. And we also would like to say that our mission is to develop trails and trail accesses in the Carson Valley and Douglas County area. So, in support of this proposal, we'll continue to cooperatively work with the future owners and Nevada State lands to make that happen.
Are there any questions? Mr. Hale. Thank you very much, Mr. Hale. Again, we appreciate your input. And I'm being redundant, but if you'd identify yourself for the record and who you represent, sir.
Thank you, Joel Dunham. I'm the executive director of the Carson City Visitors Bureau.
Thank you, sir.
Here to show support for the trailhead project. If you look at the rebranding effort that we've gone through in Carson City over the course of the last year and a half, we're seeing the benefits of that. We're marketing ourselves based on our outdoor recreation opportunities. Mr. Lurie touched on the economic value of having visitors come to our region. We work collectively with Douglas County Visitors Authority to market the, the area, the region, to visitors. Visitors account for about thirty-five percent of all taxable sales in Carson City. We are marketing the trail system. We're marketing outdoor recreation. This ties right into that entire rebranding of Carson City, ties into the branding effort of the entire region. If you look at the branding effort of the Nevada Commission on Tourism, you've got Don't Fence Me In, A State Apart, Stay and Play, Your Experience Starts Here, Rugged, Relaxed, and Reachable. We are selling ourselves as a regional destination. Where that ties into the economic value, not just the dollars the visitors spend, but we're showcasing quality of life. We're bringing in young professionals, hopefully then, that would want to relocate, bring their businesses to the area. Young minds, young educated minds. This is what they're looking for, is the quality of life. So, here in support of the project.
Are there any questions, this gentleman? Thank you, we appreciate your input. For the record, please identify yourself and who you represent, sir.
Sure. Charles Donahue, I'm the administrator for the Division of State Lands. Just wanted to say thank you, put on the record, thank you to staff for their hard work on this project. And I am in favor of support of the master plan amendment and zoning map amendment requests that the applicant, Carson City, has proposed before you today. But I am here as the property owner, and I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions, Mr. Donahue? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you taking your time. Anyone else from the public that has a desire to, to approach the podium? Make any comments at all regarding this application? at all regarding this application? Again, for the record, would you identify yourself and?
Yes.
And also who you represent?
My name is Jeff Potter, and I sit on the Board of Muscle Powered. We support both these amendments as it pertains to advancing the trailhead project. We've already looked at some of alignment connecting Kings Canyon to the proposed trailhead and the current trail in Carson Valley. So I just want to lend my support for that and this amendment.
And Mr. Potter, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And who do you represent?
Muscle Powered. We're a nonprofit organization in Carson City that's, that is building trails. We are currently working on the Ashton-Kings Canyon Trail.
All right, sir. Are there any questions, Mr. Potter? Thank you very much, thanks for taking your time. Anyone else from the public wish to approach the podium, make any statements regarding this matter? Let it be noted for the record that there's no further indication of any additional testimony. We'll bring it back to staff. Do you have anything else you want to add? Ms. Pinsky?
Nothing else to add, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion or motion?
I would like to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Eswin.
Actually, two motions.
All right, sir.
I move to adopt Resolution 2014-PC-2, recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of MPA-14-140, a master plan amendment, to change the land use designation of property located south of Highway 50 West at Lake Tahoe Golf Course Drive, APNs 007-131-34 and -35, and 007-051-81 and -86, from public, quasi-public to rural residential, based on the findings contained in the staff report. Should we have separate seconds for those?
We have a motion made by Mr. Eswin, and do we, do I have a second?
Yes, I do second.
Second by Mr. Dami, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Eswin?
I would move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZMA-14-141, a zoning map amendment, to change the zoning of property located south of Highway 50 West at Lake Tahoe Golf Course Drive, APN 007-131-34 and -35, and 007-051-85 and -86, from conservation reserve to single-family, five-acre, based on findings contained in the staff report.
I have a motion for approval by Mr. Eswin, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Dami, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And for the record, it's our goal to bring these to the December 4th Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pinsky. Next item on the agenda, it's a non-action item, G-1, Director's Report to the Commission by Mr. Plummel and Future Agenda Items. Mr. Plummel, pardon me, sir?
We have one more, one more item to go.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, action item. F-4, MPA-14-148, for possible action, to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors on the annual master plan report. Mr. Plummel, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, for the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. And I won't be terribly long in this presentation.
I wasn't trying to cut you off, Mr. Plummel.
No, I know, I know, I know, but to wrap up the evening with this item before general reports. So this is the annual master plan report that's presented to the Planning Commission that's, that's actually an opportunity required by state law to promote master plans and make recommendations to the Board on the implementation of master plans each year. So the report is attached, as we also take this as an opportunity to provide some growth and development information to you, and reporting how the action plan implementation strategies have been going over the, over the past year. So all of that is sort of included in the report, and I'll go over some of that. I do want to note that if you've paid attention, or those that have been around for past master plan any reports and the action plan, I've had, I've had more information in there, I've reached out to more departments in the past and gotten more feedback. There's a little bit less in the feedback of actions that have occurred over the last year. Part of that is, part of that is just kind of having other things going, other projects going on within the department and not having the time and, and putting that sort of effort into this one, but also kind of knowing, and as that leads into the recommendations for this year, and what we're able to do in the next year also, is fairly limited. We have a pretty large project that was recently approved in the downtown Carson Street Plan. There's going to be a lot of implementation required by staff on that, and as well as a couple other things, so we're also a little bit limited in how much we can take on over the next year, and so I'll kind of go over that a little bit as well. But just to kind of start, and by going through some of the, some of the numbers and information related to growth, and I include these each year, these, these growth numbers and various growth indicators of what's going on, because it kind of, it should sort of be an indicator of where we are in implementing the master plan. How far along are we? We have a, we have a build-out. We've adopted a master plan land use map that takes us to build out of a population of approximately 75,000 to 80,000 when we're at 55,000, 56,000 today. So there's a lot, there actually is quite a bit of potential for growth in the city over, it's going to take a long time to get there, so we're pretty far out. So looking at just this first one, this is, says growth management allocations. What that means is building permit, residential building permit approvals by type of residential unit, with the base of that, that yellow bottom section each year there since 2000 being single-family detached residential product. So we know, you know, we've seen since recession times, that's really the base of residential construction that has dropped way down. But you'll see, compared to the past few years, we have recently seen an uptick in, in single-family residential development, and also a lot, as we see in our department and not necessarily through applications, yet more interest in residential development, we've had a 100, 100 units of the Schulter Ranch subdivision record recently to make available more lots for single-family residential development. So we, we anticipate that that will continue to slowly creep up in pace for, with some, with some growth. And let me skip that for a second, I'll go to this, and just while we're on the topic of building permits, this is the total, total permit by valuation, with the residential, again, being on the bottom, new commercial in, in red, and then the top part being various other commercial remodels and other miscellaneous permits. This doesn't go back as far, but, and basically, this, this, this is by fiscal year, so we're actually about one-third through the way of this fiscal year compared to the last fiscal year, so we're about right on track to get up to that same pace of overall building development from the last year. So now let me go back to the population projection. So again, another kind of indicator of how far we are along in getting towards our build-out and our, our master plan build-out. And, you know, I should put a point in here for the purposes of this meeting and discussion as to where, where were we when we adopted the master plan? And so it's right, one of these points right in here where the cursor is in 2006, when we adopted the master plan. It was adopted through a period where we had seen pretty, pretty good growth continue for a period of time, and it was kind of anticipated that that would likely continue for a while, and we would see growth and implementation of the land use map, but in actuality, with what has happened since then, we've, we've had a decrease in population. The red line represents from this point going forward, some, a moderate growth scenario that the city, that we use, that we have used and continue to use for, for long-range planning purposes, you know, water master plan and things. And by that estimate, which is a growth at about one, I think it's about 0.8 to 1%, is the growth rate on that, it would put us at our build-out population out at about 2016, or, you know, about 40-plus years from now. In black there, the line going up a little bit more steeply in black is the recently released state demographer population projections. And these, and he had some draft projections earlier this year, and then they were actually revised once Tesla was announced, going into the park there in Story County and that I-80 corridor. And actually, with Tesla, Tesla actually increased his, his projections quite a bit. I caution, you'll notice that's a little, that, that projection is a little higher. And I've said this to, when I pass these out, I caution a little bit about jumping on the demographer's bandwagon on this, because two years ago, the projection was that we wouldn't even have the population, we, higher population than we have today for 15 years. So it's kind of like, however the economy's going right now is how the population projections go out for a ways. That's, I know that sounds a little critical, the demographer's not here, I was looking to make sure. That's a little critical, I would not want to be in his shoes and do it, and that, that's just, the model that they use is based on economics. What this reflects is a positive economic outlook, actually. If you want to take something positive from this, I wouldn't necessarily expect that we are actually going to grow at this rate, we obviously monitor it this every year, but it is an indication, based on the growth model, that there are positive economic indicators that lead the demographer to come to this conclusion that Carson City is going to grow at a faster rate than we have in the past. So that's just some information and commentary on that. I think this is the last chart I have before getting to kind of the recommendations for next year that we're asking you to forward to the Board. This is total planning applications to submit, to submit it. I have in your packet also the number of applications that are specifically applications that come to the Planning Commission, the, which is obviously fewer, but the kind of the shape of that graph is very, very similar to this. And what we've seen, obviously, is down in that bottom portion of 2008, 2009, that's when planning staff was reduced down to its current levels, and, you know, commensurate with how the applications were going at the time, how the revenues were going at the time for the, for the city. And we've, we've seen a little bit of an uptick over the years, we're, and we're on pace to, again, slightly exceed last year's number of applications that we, that we process. We continue to do that with, with the staff we have, that's, that's not a complaint per se, but we are internally starting to get a little stressed in the, getting to that limit of, of being able to do, bring these applications, for example, to the Planning Commission every month, the applications that you don't see, that we have to process, that are administrative and other things, and still be able to take on, on special projects throughout the year, so. So our, our recommendations for this year, I mean, we, we think, well, to back up a little bit before I go into these specifically, the Board of Supervisors is expected to go into their strategic planning session in late January this year, and actually, that's the purpose of this, the timing of this, so that these can be forwarded to them at that time. And then they set, they set the goals and priorities. They did not have that session last year, so, but what we have is the actual projects that they have approved, which has kind of set the policy, which is, they, they recently, they recently approved the downtown project to go forward. And that actually implements a couple of strategies, of high priority strategies that were in the master plan for implementation, and that, that we're going to be working on next year, and is going to be a priority for us to work on next year, and that's to develop the capital improvements program for downtown. That's going to be the design of the streetscape enhancement and all of that. The design for Carson Street is going to occur pretty, through, with public input involved throughout, through 2015, so the, the timing of that, with construction going to 2016, so the timing of that coincides with this. So actually, those top two relate to the downtown prop, project. The second one includes exploring opportunities to establish a business improvement district in downtown to help pay for public instruct, public infrastructure improvements and downtown area marketing and events coordination. And in fact, that is exactly the direction we've received from the Board of Supervisors. We're in contact with the downtown property owners and are, are going to be working with them over the next few months to implement that, to help pay for the maintenance of, and other things related to those downtown improvements. So those are, those are actually quite big projects and to take on, and we're looking forward to it, it's great, but know that it's, it's, we're implementing the master plan, which I think is a very good thing. Some other, a couple other things there that are also in your report, you know, I noted that there are some land use map corrections that we would typically include with this for some public properties that have been purchased over the last couple of years through the open space program or otherwise transferred for various public purposes. You have some maps in there showing where those are in general description, but we're not asking you to take action on that. Again, with, with other staff projects that were going on, it wasn't, we didn't feel it was urgent enough, we let it slide, basically, it, we'll bring those back to you next year as staff, as staff is available to do that. We had other applications stacking up at the time, so didn't bring those forward. But we'll do that in 2015. And also, as I mentioned in more detail in your report, there's a requirement by NRS for us to implement a master plan utility plan. Again, haven't been able to go through that process as of today, but that's something else we have to work on very soon. So those are our recommendations that we will hope, are asking you to bring forward to the, recommend in your act, in your motion tonight for us to take to the Board of Supervisors in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plummel. Are there any questions, Mr. Plummel, by the commission? There appears not to be an indication for any question, additional questions. We'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion or motion, and/or motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Eswin?
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors acceptance of the 2014 master plan annual report.
We have a motion by, for approval by Mr. Eswin, do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a second by Mr. Steele, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Staff reports, G-1, Director's Report to the Commission, any future agenda items, and Commission reports and comments. Mr. Plummel?
Sure, thank you, thank you. As a, just a couple items in the, for the, for the December 18.
No, 17.
As I mentioned in my prior report, the downtown project was approved by the Board of Supervisors, but in, in November, there were not any other items that had previously been to the Planning Commission that went for, that went to the Board, so I don't have anything else to report on that. They did appoint Susan as an official hearings examiner, so we have, currently at the city, I was, or before they appointed her, I was the only hearings examiner. A hearings examiner is able to review administrative permit, so there's, in, in our code, we have some various things, such as accessory structures of a certain size, that are an administrative permit before they get big enough to be a variance, or before they get big enough to be a special use permit and come to the commission. We also have drive-through windows facing streets are also an administrative permit. So whereas previously, I was the only one that was appointed to do that, Susan recently, and I don't know if I reported that before, but Susan recently passed the AICP, the American Institute of Certified Planters Test, and so she's officially that, and therefore she can be officially an administrative hearing, hearings officer, and so she was appointed by that, by the Board. And then the other appointment that we had by the Board was Paul Eswin to the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission. So he is the, he's the at-large, Carson City at-large appointee to the Planning Commission by the, and I'm not sure. by the, and I'm not sure, has that gone to the governing board at TRPA yet?
It will be taken up by the governing board tomorrow.
Great. And I'm the other, every, so Carson City is actually attached to the lake, and we're part of TRPA because we do have, we officially touch and are a piece of the lake. Every planning manager, planning director around, at the jurisdictions around the lake are also on the Advisory Planning Commission. So I've been serving on that, actually, as for the city, for the department, for about, for at least 10 years, I think pretty close to when I started here, at least 10 years I've been on there. And so it'd be nice, Paul, I'm really actually glad that Paul was nominated by Shelley Aldine and appointed, and somebody that's involved as a planning commissioner here will be a good addition to what recommendations they're looking for up on the APC of the TRPA. And then finally, I know, we apologize for not drilling in the special meeting nights of Tuesday on there. I know, I thought there might be some confusion on that, but at least we got a quorum out of it, so thanks, Paul, for hurrying up and getting here. But again, the reminder, December's the same thing. It's an odd day. It's not the regular last Wednesday because of the holidays. It's December 17th. You know what day of the week that is?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. It is back on Wednesday, the 17th, but then it's at 1:00. So we'll try to remember to send email, a lot of emails out before that meeting to get people there, but it's, so it's on a Wednesday, again, different date, different time. We'll try to remember to send out emails ahead of time. Okay? That's my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Plummel. And for the record, I believe we'd like to congratulate Ms. Pansky on her passing the certification, and one additional position for her to fill. And for Mr. Paul Eswin being appointed to the TRPA Advisory Board. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's right.
BA.
Is there any member of the commission that would like to have anything, any comments, discussion, or anything you'd like to have, any future agenda? All right. Thank you. Public comment. We have two people here, one, I should say, distinguished-looking gentleman with white hair, as a member of the public, and we have a lady back there as a member, but would you wish to approach the podium and make any comment at this time? Let it be noted for the record that no member of the public wishes to address the commission at this time. Next item on the agenda, I'm ready for adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Eswin. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Dami. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff.